Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator, Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong, solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator, Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
Here.
Antor.
Vonck.
Here.
Chair Bolter.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have 17 members present, two absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now I'll call on Commissioner Skaggs for our invocation today.
Thank you, Chair. Merry Christmas and happy holidays, everyone. It's great to see you all. Look forward to our work today and in the year to come. Today with me, I have Josh Wall, who's a pastor currently at First Reform Church in Zeeland. But when I asked him to join us, he was a pastor at Fifth Reform Church in Eastgate in the 19th district. So Josh, if you can take it away for us. Thank you.
Thanks. Will you join me in prayer? Dear God, we give you thanks for a new day. We give you thanks for breath, for the opportunities that are before us, for the challenges that are behind us. And as we try to deal and engage in this creative and chaotic world that you have made, we pray that you make us and enable us to do that as agents of grace and of mercy, of truth and of peace, and allow us to engage fully and dutifully in this world that you've called us to. Regardless of what our role is or how we serve, may we do it with dignity, with honor, and may your grace and truth in life shine in the city and in this county and in this region. Thank you for the many blessings you give us. Be with those who don't. Be with the kids who are hungry. Be with the parents who are struggling. Be with the adults of all stripes and sizes that deal and wrestle with their own demons. And in this time of wealth and disparity, may you be present and may you lead and compel us to empathy and compassion. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Skaggs. All right, we are on to Item 5, Special Order of Business. And I'll call on Sam Moore from the Kent County Parks Foundation for presentation.
Well, good morning. Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of notes this morning. It's a real honor to be an SOB. And that is a special order of business, of course. So it's a pleasure to be here. Some of you were looking for...
Several different ways.
Yeah. So several of us were looking forward to the presentation this morning, but Kim Perry chose a Rook Canell overhearing me. So I wish her the best in that endeavor. Just wanted to provide kind of an update, as we do on a yearly basis, and thank the Commission for all of their support. The Chair instructed me to be short and brief, so I'm going to try. I just wanted to mention that this year is the 20th anniversary of the Parks Foundation. So it was founded in 1999 to be a collaborative partner with the county in the construction and development of Millennium Park. The first event that we hold on an annual basis every year is the Parks Matter Breakfast. In this past year, we had Ginny Sines, the volunteer coordinator at the Parks Department, do a presentation on all of the various volunteer opportunities at the parks. And if you haven't heard her presentation, I would encourage you to do it because it's incredible, the amount of collaboration that's happening through the Parks Department and under the leadership of Dan and the county administrator's office. They really are doing a fantastic job there. And Ginny and the volunteer opportunities that are available to the residents are just phenomenal. And it turned into a couple of different successful items for us by having her present and an increase of volunteers there. And I'll touch on that in just a second. And to help celebrate the 20th anniversary, Meyer gave us $20.50 gift cards that we were able to do several contests with social media. The Kent County Parks Department did that. And it built their social media profiles on Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter. And so it was really helpful and a nice incentive. And so we thank Meyer for their generous contribution to help us celebrate our 20th anniversary and help the parks system. Also wanted to mention that this year, we received a grant from the DTE Energy Foundation to help enhance our recycling efforts within the county parks. And so that's just coming through. We just learned about it about 10 days ago. And so we're going to finalize that and working with the Parks Department. So that was a very cool item that came through. And thank you to the Chair and the Administrator and others that helped kind of connect the dots and piece that together. So I think that's an exciting opportunity as we look down that path, and we're excited to have received the grant from them. And as I mentioned with Ginny, she was very helpful in helping us secure the first 1% for the Planet participant. And that's a program through Patagonia. And I know a couple of the Commissioners were at the Patagonia Executive's presentation at Econ Club a couple of weeks ago. And so we had Envoy B2B CEO's John Faber. And they gave us over $12,000 this year as part of their 1% for the Planet efforts. And they've been a great contributor and volunteer source in the parks. So they were putting on an annual event where they, this year, they did it at Millennium Park, where they did trail cleanups on all of the different trails and then ended at the meadows. And so they came from all the different trail points and then had a big celebration and barbecue at the meadows. And so they're looking at other parks throughout the county that they can continue this collaboration and working with Ginny's. And so it's great to see kind of all the dots getting connected with her efforts and the other efforts in the donor community coming together. I also wanted to mention that this year, we sponsored, the Kent County Parks Foundation sponsored Jazz in the Parks. And that used to be way back at the zoo. Then it moved to Inabowan Park here in downtown. And then with the construction of the river and all the activities along the riverfront, that wasn't as viable of a location for it. So this year, this past year, they moved it to Millennium Park. And so the Parks Foundation sponsored all the rental fees for it to be at the Curry Amphitheater out there. If you, I know Commissioner Steck and maybe a couple of others were able to attend. It's phenomenal. They do 10 concerts that are free of charge with the Jazz. They provide scholarships to Jazz students with the proceeds that they make at the event. And so this year, we look forward to launching that after the first of the year. And we're going to help with some coordinated media efforts so that we can boost the profile of it because they really love our facilities out there. There's plenty of parking, accessible restrooms. And so we're also looking at the possibility of, through donor funding, getting a ban shell for the amphitheaters so that it become more visible and usable. So but the first year was a great success, and we look forward to that continuing. Then we moved into our fall event, and we'll touch on Something's Grilling. We did successfully raise $235,000. We attempted to honor John and Nancy Kennedy. And I want to set the stage a little bit. So it was September 11th. The Sheriff's Office and her honor guard did a phenomenal job of honoring and recognizing September 11th and remembering it. And then our Administrator, Wayman Britt, gave a riveting opening welcome remarks. And then dinner was served. For some. That was the night of the straight line winds that hit Belknap and then moved on to Ada. And there was many of us in this room that were under this wonderful pavilion out there, including our Chair and County Clerk. Everyone got wet, soaked, and then the tornadoes came and we had to evacuate. So it was one of the most memorable events you'll ever attend. And we're hopeful that next year, we can capitalize on how memorable it was that people will return. And John and Nancy graciously agreed to give us a redo. So unfortunately, they got my playbook by the program of how we were really going to get to them. So now I have to go back to the drawing board and find some new material. And so I'm busy working on that to have some fun. But it was a fun event in the beginning, and then all heck broke loose. But so moving on, just kind of a highlight from last year, in 2018, we raised $875,000 as a foundation. This year, we're just over $920,000. And I just wanted to mention the collaboration with the Parks Department for the 2020 projects and some of the master planning that's going to be happening that this body approved funding for. We look forward to being participants in that. I think that's going to be a really terrific way to bring everyone together and really gain some knowledge with the parks. And one of the things that we would like to do is help sponsor a bus tour of the park system for the Commissioners, similar to what we did in Millennium Park, because I think there's so many hidden gems out there and so many untold stories. And I think what we found in Millennium Park as we were driving through it and touring it, learning a lot about the history, why some of the things were done, and some of the exciting things that are taking place out there. And you're all ambassadors to your communities. And I think if we were to go around to several of the parks in a session, there's so much to learn and really just get a feel for it. When you're, there's nothing, we can give all the presentations in the world, but when you're on the ground and seeing it, there's nothing that replaces that. And so we look forward to working with your team to put that together for a really meaningful day, to learn a lot more and dive in depth in the parks. And then just the other thing I wanted to mention briefly is, the foundation through donors is committed to funding the visitor center. It'll be in conjunction with the office, the new Parks Department office there at the gateway entrance to Millennium Park. And then finally, what I wanted to just touch on is, some of you may have seen the video, but we produced a video this summer about Millennium Park. And we plan to do some additional efforts to expand the reach of it and working with some of our partners in Experience Grand Rapids and other entities to help promote it. But I wanted to show it today because it really does highlight what happens when the public and private sector come together and work together. And so I just, I wanted to show you this video that we put together on Millennium Park and thank you for the vision and foresight as a body to work with the private sector to make it happen. And I think it's one of the most fantastic regional attractions that we have. So I'll let the video do the talking and just reminding you and thank you for your efforts in doing that. And then I will be done. So I hope that was short.
There is a place not far from here. Some call it an urban paradise. A place where you can soak in the sun, revitalize the senses, meet old friends, or make new ones. An inviting embrace between land and water. There is a place not far from here that is a respite from the city. Where the only noise that you hear is the music of nature. And the only buildings you will see are made of sand. There's a place not far from here where families gather to celebrate the little things, big things, and even nothings. And they're together. And that's what matters. A place made possible by those whose passion was to leave a legacy for us and build memories with us. There is a place not far from here that as the sun sets, you bring home a souvenir of the perfect day. Millennium Park.
Just a reminder to the body that that's what you helped fund and build. And the private sector was very proud to be collaborative partners in that effort. But thank you for building such a gem for the entire region.
Great. Great presentation. Awesome video. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Salfeld.
Thank you, Sam, for being our SOB today.
My pleasure.
We had that great tour that Peter Sekia made available for us Commissioners. I believe that was at the end of summer last year. We've seen even big improvement since then. It's just so exciting to see what's going on out there. What, in your budget, you had meant, I think you said you raised $920,000 this past year. What are like some of the top areas where the expenses are that the foundation spends?
Most of it's land acquisition.
Okay.
And so it varies. Some of it is the 30% match for trust funds, and then others are just various pieces that we're trying to piece together, the financing for different land acquisition pieces.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Sam. I want to take this opportunity as a board member to let you know what a great job that you do, how happy we are that you are on board and have been leading this charge. It's made a great big difference. We have a phenomenal active board. And what I'd like to do for 2020 is get the Commissioners all on board for the Commissioner Tour. That's my goal. Because I really think you need to see more of our park system. It really is a phenomenal private and public partnership to make things happen for the residents in our county. And it is just, I think, one of the best gems that we offer. I'm honored to be on the committee. I also open my checkbook every year to this cause. And down the road, maybe each Commissioner can consider that. I know a number of Commissioners over the past few years have written plenty of checks. I'd love to see our participation in that area also increase. So I'm going to throw that in there, Sam. I'll do the ask. And if you can make Something's Grilling as well coming up, that would be great too for 2020. So Sam, continue the good work. I'm glad we have an active board. And this is just, it continues to get better, and I love being a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you for all of your work on it.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I think our park system is so important. The open and natural spaces all over the county, Millennium Park and so many others that are accessible to people all over the county. I think it's such an important asset, both now and over the long term. And I think the model of, what you said, Sam, public-private partnership here with the parks is really second to none, you know, even in Kent County, but also in many governments. I think it's an exemplary model of the ability to bring both the public and private funding mix together to create a real gem. And thanks, Sam, for stepping up the game with the foundation.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Sam. Again, thank you for all your work. I am blessed to have Millennium Park in my district, so it is wonderful. And also blessed to live about 500 feet from it, so I get to enjoy it on a regular basis. So it's always interesting to observe, even though I get into the park frequently, how it continues to change and evolve and develop and improve. So, and I know that you and the foundation are a significant part of that, so thank you for that.
Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. I do have a question, Sam, about as far as accessible and all of this. We certainly all know that it's not, other than maybe one person's backyard, it's not in a lot of people's backyard. And perhaps I should know this information and just am not aware of it. But is there a partnership at all with, say, some of the inner-city Grand Rapids areas? I know in Catwood, whatever, to get some of our lower-income families, children, a chance to go and really have an experience at Millennium Park? Or is that something we could look into in the future so that it really is accessible for all?
I believe there are programs. I would defer to Dan or someone in the Natural Parks Staff to answer that question.
Dan, do you want to come up, or Matthew?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we do offer a Splash Pass program.
Okay.
That goes out to all the disadvantaged children of very low program income.
But as far as transportation to get there? I mean, this is a struggle we have in Catwood. Our Parks and Rock Department is far enough from some of our lower-income persons, it may as well be in Alaska, and I don't mean that to sound funny, to get there.
We currently do not.
Okay, so that's something maybe we could look into and work on in the future because it's wonderful to have the facilities. But if you can't, if you don't have the transportation or the means to get there, all it is is a dream that can't be recognized, so.
There has been some talk with the Rapid way back.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Hennessy.
Perhaps it would be worthwhile talking about what your relationship is to Kent County and to the Parks Department. And I'm curious as to, you know, how much you actually have on hand right now. I know you're very helpful to us, to the Kent County in providing that match for funds. But perhaps you could talk more about your, how you make the decisions, what money you have available, and your relationship to our Parks Department.
Happy to. So the Parks Department did, and this body had that master plan review in preparation for the five-year master plan that was submitted to the DNR. That's required, I believe it was last year, down on the second floor. And that was, that's required to submit to the DNR, the Department of Natural Resources, to qualify for any of the trust fund grant funding. So the five-year master plan, we participated in that process, and this body approved it, and then it was submitted and approved. So that qualifies for the trust fund dollar. So then the county staff and Parks Department works on different ideas of land acquisition and what parcels to purchase, and then works with the foundation board on figuring out how do we come up with a 30% match to make it achievable, to do the purchase. So most of it is in the land acquisition side. We generally maintain a fund balance of about 1.2 million. And that ebbs and flows. Right now, it's about 2 million, but we have a check to cut to the county for a big chunk of it, for one of the more recent land acquisitions. And so it's more of the Parks Department and the leadership here in deciding what pieces to acquire. And then they work with us to figure out what, how we're going to go about to raise the money for the 30% match. And then there's also the trail program that we work with the Parks Staff on identifying which trail connectors are needed. And then obviously Meyer is the large, has been the largest contributor to the trail network thus far. And so we work with other partners on doing some of the trail connections. So it just depends on the piece. And we are exploring some different development options and actually funding some of the development of the parks. We haven't done, outside of Millennium Park, we haven't done too much of that thus far.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. On those questions and on your comments, I was wondering if there's been discussion about how the Parks Foundation can partner with Kent County when it comes to community outreach, when it comes to the planning of our parks? You know, our Parks Plan calls for the idea of building as many, building regional parks that are regional draws. And the best way to make something a regional draw is to start from the drawing board at a regional level and seeing what can draw folks from across Kent County to each of our, each of these gems. And just wondering, has that been a conversation that the Parks Foundation can partner with Kent County on?
Well, I just want to say, because the timing's perfect.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, we're meeting to talk specifically about that and the funding that's in the budget that you provided to the Parks Foundation. Dan and I have been working on an RFP to get a supporter consultant to help us with the Parks Foundation. So on the new ones, and then we have the five-year master plan. So it's new muscles for us, and we're working on it to meet that goal.
Great. Thank you. And if possible, I have an additional follow-up. In terms of, you know, writing on Commissioner Melton's conversations, you know, access and mobility is one of the barriers we do have to getting folks, especially to Millennium Park. And one of the things that we've seen is seeing a new public-private partnerships when it comes to mobility and transit. I know that there was talks with the Rapid. Has there been any talk about some kind of shuttling system that could be a publicly and privately funded venture to help get folks, at least from the central station that many folks can get to, to Millennium Park as an option?
We haven't had recent conversations about that, but we can always, based on the feedback we're getting today, take that into account as we talk tomorrow and other times to see what we can brainstorm with the community on, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, nothing against that little park in Walker. I prefer to go to the east, out to Seedman Park, Fallsburg, places like that. And so, yeah, I definitely know we have just a great series of gems for folks to use and to access. That being said, I, you know, as we move forward with this, would want to revisit an idea that Commissioner Vonck used to champion, so to put him on the spot, that, you know, to explore a Parks Commission. Because the Parks Foundation and all the great work, however, to really elevate our perspectives on the park through a Parks Commission. You know, the boards and committees that oversee our various departments really do add value and help elevate those conversations and what people are looking at. So I think that could be a nice next step as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Commissioner, I agree with you for the first time.
Second that motion.
Any other questions for Sam, or Matthew, or Dan, or anything related to parks? All right, Sam, awesome work. Thank you for your leadership and all your hard work. And it's very evident how much you've really worked to improve the Parks Foundation. So thank you so much. All right, we are on to Item 6, public comment related to agenda items. Do we have any public comment today regarding agenda items? All right, seeing none, we are on to Item 7, Consent Agenda. I'll call on Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. I move the consent agenda for today.
Moved by Commissioner Skaggs, support by Commissioner Breeby. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Talon.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Vonck.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 17 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to Item 8, Resolutions. And I'll call on Commissioner Skaggs for Resolution 8A.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 111 of today's date, the purchase of development rights ranking that comes to us from the Agricultural Preservation Board and the Administrator's Office. Support.
Moved by Commissioner Skaggs, support by Commissioner Bukowski? Was that Bukowski? Wooden. I'm sorry, Wooden. Sorry, I need to look up. Any questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So all of you know this, that I fundamentally disagree with how the existing PDR program works, primarily the perpetuity, that, you know, this is forever, so that future generations, centuries from now, are stuck with this as is. That being said, I have no doubt... works, primarily the perpetuity, that, you know, this is forever, so that future generations, centuries from now, are stuck with this as is. That being said, I have no disagreement with the ranking. The Agricultural Preservation Board's done a fine job, good processes there, and also commend the Agricultural Preservation Board and the Administrator's Office for what, from my perspective, is really good efforts that are ongoing this year and into next year to really engage new ideas, re-engage old ideas, and look more broadly at balancing both our agricultural interests, business, land preservation, as well as ongoing growth and development of our communities.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on 8A? All right, seeing none, this is not a roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Onto 8B, and I'll call on Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you Chair Bolter. It's my privilege to introduce resolution 12519, resolution number 112, the 2020 Management Pay Plan Compensation Program from the Human Resources Department.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees, support by Commissioner Morgan. Questions or comments on 8B, resolution 112? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 12519112, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Talon.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Saulfeld.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Vonk.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 17 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 12519112 is adopted.
Thank you Madam Clerk. We are quickly on to item nine on our agenda, public comment unrelated to any county matter? Any public comment today? All right, is this public comment over here, or? Seeing none, we're on to item 10, reports. Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you Madam Chair. I'd get my hand up at the right one here. Yesterday, Commissioner Ponstein, Commissioner Sparks, and I attended the SMART Group, which is an association of 14 Southwest Michigan counties. We were in Ottawa County, they hosted it, and we had a great time there of learning some of the newer things there, with their, there's a commercial airport and with their park, energy park they call it. It's the new energy source in Holland, and it was just very, very interesting. Well, February 5, Kent County will be hosting the SMART Group, and we've invited, and they've accepted that Experienced Grand Rapids Doug will be there, and also West Michigan Sports Commission Mike will be kind of hosting and speaking on it. But just hats off to the SMART organization, the Southwest Michigan Alliance of Region 3, and so looking forward to February, and thank you for the work being done here to host that.
Thank you Commissioner Voorhees. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to add that the Experienced Grand Rapids had a meeting this week, and I know we just had them in for their update, but just a few highlights from that. They had a total number of books grouped and groups booked, and in 2018 they had 354, and in 2019 they had 412, and that's through the end of September. So I just thought that was interesting, and they still have more coming in. The other piece I want to share is their website continues to get a lot of activity, that they've had an increase in 30% of users over 2018. They average over 7,300 website users a day, that 27% of the website users are between ages of 25 and 34, and 74% of the website users access via mobile and tablet. So just thought those types of pieces are good to just continue to stay in front of and be grateful that we have Experienced Grand Rapids engaged and continuing to bring more visitors to our community.
Great. Commissioner Skaggs?
Oh, I'll report. I thought you had your hand up, sorry. Nothing to report. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you Madam Chair. Couple things about the Ford Airport. Business is up for the year, and we're going to be breaking ground next March or so on our $90 million project for the nine gate expansion to Concorse. So that's moving along, and I also want to report that we received a $5 million grant through Senator Peters' office, so I want to thank Senator Peters for that. And things just about, are just about done on the front door of the airport. So if you get a chance, I would invite any commissioner to go out there and get a tour anytime they want to go, or anybody in the audience. We're pretty proud of the airport, and it seems to be moving along.
Commissioner Steck?
Thank you Chair Bolter. A couple of items. Commissioner Ponstein and I attended the Substance Use Disorder Policy Board meeting yesterday, and among the things we learned, one of them was quite interesting, that the alcohol sales in our region are down, what, 25% in the last quarter? So, folks, you're not doing your part. It's a, yeah, that means that our PA $2 are down, and so that also means about a million dollar loss in, reduction in revenue to the LRE for substance treatment and prevention treatment. Anyway, why is that? I think it all goes back to the problems that we're seeing in this state with the shortage of alcohol through our regulated system. So hopefully that will even itself out. One would like to be able to say that our efforts in prevention have so reduced the consumption of alcohol in the state that people just don't want to buy it anymore, but I don't think that's the case. So otherwise, some of you may have caught that there was a significant policy statement from Director Gordon at the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services yesterday identifying yet another new direction for where we are going in the management of our Medicaid services. So notwithstanding the efforts that we are continuing to push forward in negotiating a new agreement between the state and the LRE, we will now have to do that in a slightly or radically different environment. The new acronym that you will have to learn is the SIP, which is the Segregated Integrated Plan. So, or Specialty Integrated Plan. I guess I've already.
Segregated, integrated doesn't go together.
So stay tuned, you'll still get more reports from me after the airport's positive reports.
Great.
And last, I know that there was a development in the, in the budget issues yesterday, and I don't know if.
Do you want to read them?
No, I don't want to read them.
I have them at the ready.
And maybe we're going to get some more comments, but particularly some of the key issues that this county has been most concerned about, maybe we'll hear more about that later.
Commissioner Vonk?
Yes, thank you Chair. I got a little talk trash this morning again, and you've seen the news release that we will not take shredded paper or plastic bags. The plastic bags are pulled out at the recycling center with a vacuum, and that gets contaminated with the paper, and so we always have issues and continued issues at the DPW. It's unlike the parks where you get a tear in the eye when you see their nice video. I like to have a video like that that shows grandpa's old chair in a landfill and the old toilet seat. That just brings me just wonderful memories, you know, but we're not able to do that at the DPW, and we try. We try hard, but anyway, we got all those issues, but on this whole alcohol thing.
He's here all week, everybody.
Tip your waitress.
A cube of aluminum cans, five foot by five foot and eight foot long, is worth 25,000. So Morgan said he'd donate 100 cans, aluminum cans, in his next trash, you know, hall. And then Voorhees came up real quick with 100 milk bottles. We don't want the milk bottles, we just want the aluminum cans. So that's a story from the DPW, and we'll be working on that forever and ever, but anyway.
Don't forget to tip your server.
That's right, that's right. Thank you.
Good work Commissioner Vonk. We'll try to work on a really prettied up video for you at some point. Commissioner Melton?
Thank you Chair. Although I don't know if Commissioner Breevy wanted to give a little update on the check, I was very taken with one thing in particular, and they have put together a media room, for lack of a better description, where they videotape different persons talking on some of the health challenges that we're having, and plan to, was it in March? I believe it'll be up and running for podcasts. And I found that to be very interesting, because I know that that is something that maybe I don't always tune into, but my kids and their group really, really enjoy listening to podcasts, and I'm hoping that means that we will reach a lot more people in the county of Kent, so I thought that was very cool.
Great. Commissioner Sparks?
Thank you Madam Chair. Just want to share that this week we got 27 proposals in total for the Ready By Five Kent County, first steps Kent County with Commissioner Skaggs. We are in the midst of reviewing those proposals, and we will have, next week we have all week to go over them, so got a lot of great proposals on the table, and we're looking forward to making sure that we make the best decision there possible to spread those funds. Also, Government Matters, Kentwood and Wyoming Chamber is having the Government Matters on Monday, so we encourage everyone, if you have information and you want to share, or you'd like to get information from your commissioners, as well as other electeds, to come out for the Government Matters. They're in Kentwood, at Kentwood City Hall on Monday morning. The Michigan Works Asset Board that Robert, excuse me, Commissioner Womack and I serve on, we do have our annual meeting coming up, and we will be giving some awards away, so that's pretty exciting. That happens next week, Monday. And Kellogg'sville School Board Meeting is coming up this coming Monday as well at 6:00. The senior citizens will be celebrating on Wednesday their annual Christmas party in Kentwood. And I want everyone just to make sure that you know of this wonderful resource that Kent County themselves, that we have every single day, will Monday through Friday at the DHHS Building on Franklin. They provide a free lunch for seniors every single day. Susan Cervantes is over that program, and she does an amazing job making sure that those seniors have a place to go. They play games, they have guests, speakers, they do lots of different things, but they also bring those individuals in via a bus. So that's, I think that's an amazing program that we offer that I think lots of times we don't think about. So let's just make sure that we support that program, and if you have a senior that you know that would like to go to the program, they're still open for accepting information at accesskent.com. And the Veterans Court, last but not least, we have a graduation for the Veterans Treatment Court coming up, and we thank Tom, excuse me, Representative Brand for hosting that.
Great. Thank you for that report. Any other official reports today? All right, I'm going to slip this into reports just because I don't really know where it goes, and I think it's more important than miscellaneous. The legislature did move on the budget yesterday in both the House and Senate. Wayman did send this email, but I just think it's important to highlight some of the things that we're hoping to be restored. It's not a done deal yet, but 3.5 million in childcare indirect costs, 14.8 for our county jail reimbursement, 4 million for county veteran services. This isn't, I believe, all coming to us, this is statewide. 500,000 for farm stress, 27.4 for pilt, 13.1 for secondary road patrol, and 13 for the Department of Transportation, general road and bridge repair. So I think that's good. I think all of our efforts really hopefully helped, and I'm glad to see that we get some movement in this holiday season. So just wanted to mention that. Onto miscellaneous, miscellaneous today, Commissioner miscellaneous? Commissioner Melton?
It wouldn't be miscellaneous if Commissioner Melton didn't say something. First of all, the airport, having traveled over the holidays, it really is a pleasure to go through that airport. I'm, I think I've mentioned enough times, I'm really not fond of airplanes, airports, being up, all these things. So it's very calming, it's very well-done, it's very inviting, and it really makes the experience for someone especially who's not excited about it, the best possible. So I just, my hat goes off to all the people that have been part of planning that, because I'm certain those things didn't happen by mistake, because other airports do not offer those same niceties. And then the second is Kent County, Kentwood, We the People Team won the regionals, which they have not done in quite a long time, and so they are on their way to state and then hopefully to nationals. So that was very, very exciting, especially considering that on the We the People Board sit students from eight different countries. So think about that. I don't know how much I could say about the United States and all the things that go on in our constitution, and here are these young persons who are from total different countries, and they have taken it upon themselves to learn an awful lot about our constitution. So it's very, very exciting. And the last is, if you've not had a chance to get over to see the trees at Meyer Gardens, it just is always such a treat. Meyer Gardens is just such a beautiful asset in Kent County, and it's well worth the trip, so thank you.
All right, Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you Chair Bolter. Just wanted to add on to Commissioner Voorhees's comments about the meeting yesterday. What goes on in Ottawa County is very similar here. I think I saw a quote from one of the first Dutch immigrants that came into Holland, is that the only way we're going to make it is if we work together. And the unique thing about the city of Holland, it's represented by two counties, so not only was Ottawa County there, Alleghan was there too, and that airport there is cooperative between the two counties. The city of Holland built that power plant, but in the agreement, the power plant also provides power to every touching township around it. So, you know, it's, it was a great experience to experience all that. There's a lot of good things, not only just going on here, but all throughout our state. So I'm appreciative of the time and the effort the staff came out, the mayor of Holland came out and spoke about what his vision is three weeks into his office, but the same thing that you hear here is collaboration whenever we can, it's always going to work better. I had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago, just after the last county commission meeting. It's been a while since I've been on the school board, longer than I would like to think, but I told people, a lot of times when you leave one public office, you're always judged on what's left afterwards. And I was invited to competition, the LEGO Junior, and people think of Legos, but one of the final things I got to do is when I was on the school board, is we brought the first robotics competition to get a team into Granville. And it was fascinating to see how that program's expanded, but the LEGO Junior is pretty much one of the three farm clubs that feed the robotics team and the robotics program. It was pretty fascinating. I know there's some more events scheduled through the year at Granville, so if you want to see them, I can get those dates out to you. But the LEGO Junior, these are second and third graders that are building robotics through the LEGO program, so I just wanted to give a shout out to all the staff at Granville that continue to make that program, but it also reaches to other school districts that have got the robotics program within their systems.
Commissioner Skaggs?
Thank you Chair. So two quick things. One, there are two new state champions in high school sports in the mighty 19th, or as you know, I like to call it the District of Champions. The East Grand Rapids Girls/Women Dive Team won in Division 3, that's 137 state champions for East Grand Rapids High School. Go East. And in girls volleyball in Division 2, Grand Rapids Christian took home the state's championship. So congratulations to all of the student athletes, parents, caregivers, fans, et cetera. Just with, and secondly, with Chair Bolter's comments.
One, there are two new state champions in high school sports in the Mighty Nineteenth, or as you know, I like to call it the District of Champions. The East Grand Rapids Girls Swim and Dive Team won in Division III. That's 137 state champions for East Grand Rapids High School Go East. And in girls volleyball in Division II, Grand Rapids Christian took home the state's championship. So congratulations to all of the student athletes, parents, caregivers, fans, et cetera. Just with, and secondly, with Chair Bolter's comments and with the email from Wayman earlier today, I think it's in, you know, we haven't quite gotten to the finish line. I think we can see the finish line. It's a lot less blurry than it was before. But I think, you know, without jinxing anything, I think that maybe it's time to at least begin the applause. I think that this body, especially Chair Bolter and Administrator Britt and everyone on this board in a very bipartisan way, did a fantastic job to make sure that the programs that benefit the people of Kent County were heard, both in both chambers in the legislature and in over at the Romney Building with the governor. And it looks like we're heading to a much better place than we were. I know it was a lot of sausage making, and that's a difficult process, especially as we transform the state into a, into divided government, which is always pretty hard to figure out where we are. But I think in the end, you know, the sausage that was built will be edible and will be something that Kent County can use to improve our people's lives.
Thank you. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, it's been a great meeting, and it's been highly positive and for once short, so I'm happy to be at the meeting today. So I just wanted to say it's been a real positive meeting, but it's, I really hate to have to break some news on some recent developments in Grand Rapids as the violence continue. But I know as we watch the news, you know, one of the things being a voice for my community is to make sure that my community and our fellowship within the larger community, you know, see a lot of these deaths besides just being another number on the newscast. Thanksgiving, I enjoy giving out, you know, turkeys and food to the homeless with some of the volunteers from the community, especially the younger people. But also on Thanksgiving, I had to call Chief Eric Payne to let him know that my sister's boyfriend had been missing since Sunday, and he did not return even on Thanksgiving to my sister's house or his mother's house. So, you know, they were pretty concerned, and his car had been found in a park, in the middle of a park with his glasses broken, and some other evidence of foul play. And my sister and her family members and community members just felt that it wasn't being investigated as a homicide, but Grand Rapids Police Department did a great job. They ended up finding the body yesterday in Ottawa County outside of Grand Valley State University, and his name was James Earl Robertson. And I just felt I owed it to him. He's lived with my mom on and off since 16. They've been together since 13 years old, and so they've been together over 30 years. Just continuing to fight the violence in our community, and I just, I'm just a commissioner that things have happened in my life, a lot of great things, but I think God also puts me in a predicament to be able to be close to find out more information about this violence, with this finding out information on what happened to him. I had a conversation with a lot of youth in the area where some of this took place or began at, and the subject of how much is life worth, if this had been over a depth or some small depth. And basically, it seemed like life on our side of town was worth about $600 in that conversation with most people. So some went as low as $5, if someone owes them $5, they would kill them without a question. And I just told them, I walked through different walks of life. Some people I, God has brought me to meet, agree, I agree with them, life is priceless. It's not a price you could put on priceless, but those are the different worlds we have, and those are the struggles we have to bring everybody into the understanding that life is priceless. So I just thank God to be a part of this commission and see the great work everybody's doing, because it gives me a balance of the positivity and negative, and I'll continue to serve and try to make our world more positive. Sorry if it's all over the place, but that was, that was a lot for us Thanksgiving. But I still am so thankful to hear this meeting this morning, the positivity, and Commissioner Morgan, without even knowing any of this, first thing he said to me this morning, wish your mom, I want to tell your mom, I said, "Happy holiday." I said, "She gonna appreciate that, because she going through a lot, and he having to be her favorite commissioner, and I'm the second commissioner." She told me about Roger before I got on here. So Roger, thank you, and thank everybody at the commission in Kent County, what you continue to do.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Womack, on behalf of all of us, we're very sorry for the loss that your family is experiencing and friends. It's, and I'm grateful you are where you are because you do call attention to a significant problem and challenge, and I think many of us are here to help as well. So with that, I will digress to what I had for miscellaneous, which was to commend the Rockford Chamber of Commerce for putting on a welcome for the 2019 State of the Community. They had invited me to attend, so a shout out to Linda Southwick for a great summary on the state of the government. They had a Senate representative, House of Representatives, the city of Rockford participated, and so did Dr. Michael Schabler from the Rockford Public Schools. So I just thought I'd let you know that that was filled, the media center at Rockford Public Schools. It was really, you had to be incredibly thin or suck in your gut to get between the tables, which I think is great to see so many people participate and be interested in government matters. So that's what I had.
Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy?
I will take the liberty of commenting on Commissioner Talan's absence, and that there is a jails task force meeting today in Lansing, and that is where he's at. And they're toward the beginning of the end of their meetings and just starting to making the recommendations.
Thank you.
Pointed to this task force by the governor.
Right. Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would like to do a shout out to our employees. I'm continually impressed with the caliber of employees we have. You know, I wander around the second floor a lot. I stop by the pension board and then the health benefits, and then I wander over to see Duarte a lot. But just, I had an issue that I brought to Holly, and it was handled professionally, and I just really appreciate the caliber of the employees that we're able to retain and recruit.
Great. Any other miscellaneous today? I just have two things. Wanted to remind everyone, our Christmas party is next Wednesday, so just make sure that's in your calendar. I also want to just, I don't even know what to say, Commissioner Womack, so sorry. And you were in my prayers last night, and you will continue to be, and we are all here for you.
Thank you.
And lastly, I wanted to call on Wayman. He's got a couple items to discuss about business for the rest of the month.
And again, to Commissioner Womack, our prayers are with you and your family. We continually are a part of that community, especially for me, and my heart goes out to you and your family. One of the things I wanted to make everyone aware of, some good news, and we've shared this with the 911 Dispatch Authority, you might remember, we have been working on how do we retrieve dollars from the communications company, Sprint and AT&amp;T and so forth, for surcharge fees? That's one of our legislative priorities. We could not do an audit of them officially. The state doesn't have legislation that allows us to do that. You might remember the conversation. We've figured out a way to propel them to provide to us the information, and as of this past week, we were told that they owe, Sprint owes us $1.4 million from miscalculations on their part, and they willingly admitted it wasn't anything that they were attempting to do. So those dollars will be coming through to the county, and we will be submitting those payments to the Dispatch Authority. And then there are several other of the agencies we're taking a closer look at, so we'll see how that goes. I might want to give a shout out to our team at Administrator's Office and Fiscal Services for their hard work over the past several months. So wanted to give you that update. So we'll put that in an action request for you soon to receipt those dollars and to appropriate them appropriately, so that will be coming before you at your next Finance Committee meeting.
I have to jump in here, Madam Chair. I can't wait. You know, we were looking to get about $500,000, but through the due diligence of the county and the work, we, what, three times that? So I just have to tell you, that's just the way we conduct our business, and congratulations.
And we have a really good relationship with Sprint, so it's, there's no, there's no problem. So we feel pretty good about how we conducted ourselves in helping them to uncover what they miscalculated.
And I appreciate Commissioner Ponstein pushing that.
Yes.
Yep.
And any other thing?
And there's a couple other businesses that we need to, companies that we need to look at as well. So it's a good start.
The other item for us, I wanted to remind everyone, I sent out a communication earlier on last week, I believe, around the Strategic Capital Fund, and you will receive the requests as a board that was approved by the Finance Committee this week at your next board meeting to receipt those into the Strategic Capital Fund. They're $7 million. And then at the first of the year, January 7th, the Finance Committee will receive recommendations to put those dollars to work. The three projects that we shared with you, the North Campus Project, the Parks Administration, which you heard a little bit about from the foundation and from Dan this morning, those projects will be coming forward after the first of the year for allocating those dollars to specific projects. We'll get you timelines, we'll get you estimates, all that be formalized after the first of the year. But we'll make sure that those dollars get appropriately delegated to the Strategic Capital so that those will work. There's $19 million that are on the table now, based on what our calculations are at the end of the year with some of the dollars that we were very fortunate to be able to receive from various funds this past year. Medicaid, we received some additional dollars that we didn't expect to receive, dollars that we had spent for health department programs, and then some other, we talked about that extensively at Finance Committee. So those will be coming to you, so I wanted to make sure that you know how important your next Finance Committee meeting and your next board meetings are coming up. Those are very important projects.
Great. Any other miscellaneous? Okay, seeing none. Commissioner Skiggs, I call on you for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair for Thursday, December 19th, 2019, at 8:30 a.m. for an official meeting.
Moved by Commissioner Skiggs, supported by Commissioner Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold close. Motion passes. We are adjourned.
We are Kent County.
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 We are Kent County.